Call to order, the City of Sagatuck City Council meeting for October 27th, 2025. Jamie, will you call a roll?
Point order, Mayor.
Yeah, it's on the agenda backwards, so.
Oh, is it? Okay.
So, what shall I do?
We'll call the order.
Okay. Here? Oh, wait, you know what? I'm sorry. I called the order. I confused it with roll call. He's trying me in the.
The United States. And you're the caller. One page two. And there's a couple. There's a little bit of interest that's a couple.
Thank you. Two calls and three lines, you know. Roll call, please, Jamie. Here.
Here. Here.
Gregory?
Here.
Here. I have, oh, we have Quorum. I have not heard from Gregory, so I'm assuming he will be joining us. Mayor's comments, another great fall weekend in Sagatuck. The Halloween parade was way fun. The only thing cuter than kids in Halloween costumes is kids and dogs in Halloween costumes. That was a lot of fun. I know our city manager was at the cemetery tour, and I think, Russ, you were going to go to that, and obviously the big parade in Douglas. So Sagatuck does Halloween up really well. It was great to see all the people. And with that, Ryan?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. And yes, the Sagatuck Douglas History Center and the township did a fantastic job with kind of bringing alive some historical figures in the community and telling their stories. And I was really neat to see that work and hear more, learn more, always little tidbits to learn and. Yeah, wow, I know that's, that came about that way, or it arrived there in that way, or that long ago. So very, very interesting. So just a few updates for you this evening. This is one thing to check, Mayor, is that tonight with microphones, I think we're looking at maybe getting some mics that match all of these to make sure that they're working, but we've noticed on some of the videos that not everybody's had their mics unmuted when you're talking, so we'll make sure and check that tonight. But the, we've been getting some questions, you know, about deer. And so as you all know, there was a Tri-Community Wildlife Committee that was formed and came up with a set of recommendations. And then kind of one of the first pieces of that that you've taken a look at is really updating our weapons-related ordinances to, one, you've are now have a provision where we can do some deer calls via firearms, if that's something that you ultimately sign off on. So that was, the ordinance was updated to reflect that. And then the ordinance still prohibits archery hunting, but leaves a mechanism for you to allow for archery hunting via approval through a resolution if there's somebody that has that interest. And so we have had a number of folks reaching out and asking if that's something that they can do. I've kind of encouraged them to, you know, submit a plan and submit what they'd like to do and their, when they want to do it, and how they're going to carry that out so that we could bring that forth to you. So you might see something like that in your future. But the other key piece is really looking at, taking the next step is looking at a more formal deer call. Also, remember, Dean and I met with the DNR Wildlife Val, just to kind of discuss that process and what we need to actually submit to them to apply for a formal permit. But then the other key piece of that is kind of who conducts the call. So, you know, I've met with Sergeant Haas to kind of discuss what that might look like from a law enforcement perspective. We actually, Sergeant Haas and I have a meeting tomorrow with Meridian Township, who is really kind of seen as a leader and kind of model example of a good way to conduct calls, regular calls, and doing it in a, you know, community-minded, community-sensitive way. So we're meeting with them tomorrow to learn more, but wanted to let you know that that's something that we are still working on. The malt head restroom construction continues. Last week, the weather was a little poor, so that kind of set things back a little bit, but they're picking things back up. This week should start to see some of the framing of the roof, as long as there's not any more rain, kind of, you know, setting things back, but things are certainly coming along there. Malt head upper platform and retaining walls, further survey work was completed last week. So once we received those reports, we look forward to our engineers kind of taking a look and then continuing to coordinate with the tribal nations on design. And then perhaps, I shouldn't say most importantly, but a huge kickoff tomorrow will be the Parking Improvements Task Force. So they have a very large agenda for their very first meeting, but they're going to take a deep dive even on their first meeting and really kind of trying to, you know, define the problem, right? That was kind of one of the first big pieces. So they're going to be working with our parking consultant on that tomorrow. So all are welcome. That starts at 3:00 PM here at City Hall. We'll also have that on Zoom, and then it'll be recorded in case folks can't attend and want to watch it back.
Great. Thanks. Questions for Ryan? I appreciate you learning more about the call, especially on the west side of the river. I hear a lot about that from folks and some sense of urgency to take some measures. So that's great. Okay, that takes us to any agenda changes, additions or deletions? All right, saying none. Guest speakers, I see that Commissioner Lovers is on the line. Brad, do you want to speak? Or are you just joining us to listen?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, I'm in the semi, so there's a little noise. I don't have a whole lot to say. All I want to say was good luck to everybody running for reelection on. So in your reelection races. Other than that, that's all I want to say.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the first public comment period, which is on agenda items only. So anyone who's in the room can come and introduce yourself and speak for up to three minutes.
Yeah. I was waiting for somebody else to go first. My name is Kurt Piper, and I'm a friend of Roy Davis's, and he's the gentleman on this living in the park right now. It's a very sad situation. I understand that you're going to be doing a proposal tonight that may take that away from him as far as having a place to live. We have not found a place for him to live yet. I've been going through different resources. You guys actually worked with OnPoint, and then they went to the Volunteers of America, and that was first part of September, I believe, is when you guys started, you know, having that conversation with them. To my surprise, very little was getting done. And I wish I would have been more involved at the beginning because I was assuming that things were actually progressing in a positive direction, but we were not having any answers yet. I want answers. We got to find him a place to live. So after that, I started looking at other resources. I'm in contact with the Knights of Columbus, HHI, which I learned from the Facebook. Somebody had made a comment about that, so I researched information with them. We're actually working with the, I said the Knights, I think it was the Knights of Columbus. Yeah, the Knights of Columbus, because they have a program that's working for vets also. We need help. We really need help. I understand that you cannot have a person living in the park, but that is his only option. We need, we need other options for this gentleman. And that's why I was always reaching out to people and saying, do you know of any place, any ideas, any thoughts, anywhere we can even temporarily house him for the time being until we find more of a permanent solution? It's just, it's a sad situation. And I've often criticized the VA for not doing more for the veterans and different things like this. And then I became involved in this whole process and realized how difficult it truly is. You know, so anything, anyone can do. I'm making a plea. Please help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Anyone, anyone else in the room wish to speak on agenda items only?
Hello, everyone. On the same topic, I.
And your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jan Cohen. I live in Douglas. I just recently became familiar, as a matter of fact, at your last meeting about the gentleman in the park. I now have about 2,000 local members in our organization, and I have their emails and phone numbers, and I have, and I can set up blast emails and text and have some people calling to see if anybody can come up with something, some housing for him. If push comes to shove, he can come and stay with me until we find something else for him. But it's a terrible thing to, I mean, what do we do at this point? We have him arrested because he's homeless because he has no place to live. He has nobody to help him. I mean, he's a veteran of this country. He fought for us, and we should give him the respect that he is due and do everything that we possibly can, turn over every stone. And I'm willing to do that. I'm a latecomer. Sadly, I didn't know about it, maybe because I live in Douglas. I don't know why. I should have known about it, but I didn't. It's not an excuse. It's just the truth. So if whatever you're going to do tonight, can you possibly give a 30-day or a 60-day window to let us keep working on this and find some housing, something temporary, something that we can do for this gentleman so that he just is not arrested or imprisoned somewhere or whatever might happen to him? Anyway, I would ask you that you would give that consideration to him at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online wish to speak? I don't see anyone. All right, that will close the first public comment period. That will take us to the consent agenda, which begins on page three. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move, I move, we approve the consent agenda as submitted on October 27th, as listed.
Second? Stanton seconded. Any discussion questions? Okay, it's a roll call vote? Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to staff reports. We heard from Ryan earlier, another opportunity to ask him questions before we move on. All right, that takes us to boards, commissions, and committee reports, starting with the Fire District. Welcome, Dan.
Dan Fox, the council's representative to the Sagatuck Township Fire District Administrative Board. First slide here is, I thought you'd be interested, we crossed a milestone, I believe that was last week, with the 1,000th call for service in the current year, so well on our way to a record. Next one, in case anyone has had this question. Where's the chief? Last week, the chief was one of the individuals in the slide here participating in the International Residential Code Review Group at that larger groups meeting, ICC meeting in Cleveland. The next slide, please. That group includes the representatives you see here on the left. It's a fairly impressive, even including Greg, it's a fairly impressive, massive group of building people, people who understand buildings and codes and whatever from a number of different perspectives, manufacturers of building, you know, manufactured building, home builders, individual home builders, and then structural engineers and what have you. Chief does that on his own time and on his own money. And that, being part of that, that group is really, really a credit to him and to the Association of Fire Chiefs that elected him to that spot. Next one, please, Jamie. This report highlights the results or the salient points from our 20th of October Fire Board Meeting. Councilman Peterson, Councilperson, forgive me, Peterson, last time mentioned, you're right, was it? It was at the proposed new south fire station. Oddly enough, or interestingly enough, on the same night as Douglas had their open house, I know you were there, and you were there. Were you there? It's truly, truly impressive. I mean, the quality of the construction, I mean, I'm not, I'm not an expert, but I do know a few things to look for in a building. It's, it's a very, if you get a chance, I think they don't go in until, move in until the 17th, week of the 17th of November, so probably still available for tours if you call somebody over there. Police cars in the back, inside garages for the, I think, for the first time ever in Douglas, which ought to add to the life of those vehicles, nothing of the comfort of getting in a, not getting in a cold vehicle first thing in the morning. Anyway, in our meeting, chief recorded two specific cost recovery payments received for two different incidents, both of which had been negotiated down somewhat. In one case, involving an accident on M-89 in the township, the fellow who basically caused the accident, his insurance company wouldn't, wouldn't pay in cost recovery for the emergency services. He took it upon himself to write check after check after check until he got to the $500 or $600, which is a pretty class act move, if you ask me. I'd like to think I'd do the same. I can't promise I would. I've, the other, I forget what the other, the other one was, which was also negotiated down a little bit. We received a grant payment, as we did last year and I think the year before, a little over $9,000 from, from the estate of Gerald and Jeanette Becken from, through their offspring and, and the trust. And chief expressed the district's appreciation for that. There is one more such payment coming next year. Noted, just because it seemed crazy, but there aren't a lot of options. Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Premium for firefighters being raised 16.7%. In prior years, we've tried to play one off against the other because sometimes you can, you know, priority health or whatever. Problem is, the next year, they just catch up. And so you're either, you're either constantly flipping it, which is a nightmare in terms of flipping things over in time and whatever, or you just kind of have to bite the bullet, which is what, where we kind of ended up with this. Approved the cost to conduct annual physicals. I think this was maximum $15,000. The, these are required physicals for the fire, fire service staff. In the past, sometimes we've had to do this where they, you know, they'd go to Holland Hospital, or they go here, or they go there. Well, it's, it's not efficient. It's difficult to manage. This, the service that the chief has hired brings a semi-trailer to the fire district, all the physicals, lab work, the whole deal will be done right there, which is nifty. This last one here, I'm not an expert on this, brought a big write-up on it. If you have, want more information, I can search it out. The, we approved the, the Fire District joining the statewide, what they call Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, which is a statewide system that individual departments can elect to join or not to join. And basically, what it does is it commits you to providing a certain number of resources in the event with significant challenge outside of your district for, for another, for example, the ice storm. I think, I, I'll get the number wrong, but the ice storm up in Gaylord last year, or whenever it was, I think they had 50 pieces of equipment that did not come from Gaylord. It came as a consequence of this. There was some big fire they keep referring to up in the UP that I'm not familiar with, but it was the same deal as chief said. UP fire departments don't have two sticks to rub together hardly. So it is a nifty deal. They even have it, it's even extended in places over in Indiana, where some of the southern counties and what have you. So what you do, it gives us access across all the departments in Allegan County and limits the resources from the Fire District going out to any of them or anybody else to a maximum of 20%. And on a case-by-case basis, you can, you can say, we can't do it. Operationally, we can't do it, or we have needs here, we don't have staff, whatever it is. So that part is, I mean, it isn't as though you have to worry about half the fire department disappearing and not coming back for six months. It obviously can improve response times. As I say, it's especially, especially valuable and useful and important in major incidents. They always talk about, you know, plane crash or things like that, dreadful things you don't even want to think about, but things that would require, I forget what incident the chief was talking about, where they needed 17 ambulances. Oh, nobody's got 17 ambulances. Maybe Detroit does. And then obviously strengthens departments, talking to departments around the state and so forth. So we took a roll call vote on that, and we approved becoming part of that. Next one, Jamie. These are the September calls for life ambulance. So we operate about a month behind in that reporting. I just put the box up. I mean, you guys all know where Sagatuck is, but I just thought it's useful to see that the vast majority of those calls are really, at least in September, we're outside, outside of Sagatuck. Next one. And this is the, this is the scorecard that life keeps on itself for the, for the county as well as the county medical. And you can, you will see what, what's what there. Again, those, those are all the calls, life's calls in the Fire District. So Sagatuck's are in there, but they're the less than a third, or roughly a third, whatever it is. And the last one, that I'd introduce you as they did in, in our meeting, to the three new full-time firefighters, brings staff to 12 full-time firefighters. The remainder are paid on call. Three guys, there was significant competition for these three spots that were funded last year. And these three guys prevailed in interview, written test, practical test, physical, you know, carrying hoses, up ladders and stuff like that. Good guys, every one of them. And I've mentioned this to the chief, my, in the, in the army, people serve not just for the money. Part of what drives them is this, is this unquantifiable, but either there or not, their sense of duty. The very same, it's a different level and different elements to either one. But same is true in the fire service. The chief says, you know, you can't pay people enough to risk their lives as often as these guys do. Or people they don't even know. None of these guys is so far, I don't even know which one it is. One of them's trying to find a house close to Sagatuck, in Sagatuck's probably, out of the question, but close to Sagatuck. One of them moved back from wherever he was to Holland with his family to be closer and to be able to apply and work here. All of them have experience inside the department, is paid on call, so they're doing plenty of these. Anyway. So Evan and Chad and Andy came to our meeting, and we got to meet them, and that was pretty cool. So. Questions, comments? Anything I can answer?
Does it look like it? Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it.
Pleasure.
Okay, with Gregory out, Joe, I'll go to Cal Lake with you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have a special meeting today. First, on the agenda, we unfortunately accepted the resignation of Abby Bigford. She attended it, I believe, I mentioned it in our workshop last week. We're sad to see her go, but definitely thank her for her service. And at the same time, we voted in as interim board member Daniel DeFranco out of the township, so he'll be stepping in in her shoes for a while. And at the same time, we had elections to replace the board chair, which fortunately or unfortunately went to me. And when you think of sewer, think of Joe. Daniel's going to step in as. Daniel, Daniel also was nominated as the vice chair, so at least for his interim appointment. So then we, we kind of went on and had a detailed discussion around hiring an interim facility administrator, which has been on the table for a while now, and the board did vote on it and elected to proceed. At the same time, we had a candidate in Park, ran the utilities over at Park Township. So we had a detailed interview with him, and subsequently, the board decided to proceed and bring him on for a term while the ongoing search continues to find the permanent administrator, which may be, which may be this person as well. So we'll be, we'll be, or to come on that. We also agreed to engage a search firm initially to help find, you know, again, the long-term, you know, general manager, facility administrator. They'll be starting right away. They were pretty ambitious. They're talking about a timeframe as early as beginning of the year to actually have somebody in the seat. So it's a little aggressive, but we'll, we're going to try and push for it. And yeah, and then there's still going to be further discussions on whether or not we use the search firm then to either bring on the candidates for the operations role, which we'll be interviewing as well, including the current interim operations manager, and also potentially some of the field workforce, because we're actually down to headcount. For the foreseeable future, we decided to kind of follow what Sagatuck does, and we're going to have workshops in between our, just with everything going on, we're going to continue for the next several months, having a workshop in between our regularly, monthly regular meetings. So those, I believe, will be on Wednesday, Wednesday, early afternoon. So. Yeah, a lot going on, but that's, that said, it was a long meeting today. We got a lot done, so.
Congratulations on being with Joe. Thank you for. Yeah, it's, it's really important, obviously, hugely important service on your part, but also what Cal Lake does is critical. So appreciate you leading that. Chris, I know you have a meeting soon, or you just had one?
Well, I'm kind of frustrated, Madam Mayor, because our meeting is tomorrow night, and it's going to be in conflict with the Parkley meeting, and people just aren't going to know which one to go to. So yes, we have a meeting.
Okay, can't wait to hear. This is ZBA. We don't have anything. Russ is district, district?
Our next scheduled meeting is on Thursday, November 6th at 6:00 PM.
Awesome. Joe, anything new on planning?
Not this week.
Okay. And Lauren, PPW is tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, we meet.
Right. Nothing on Tri-Community Motorized?
Big one.
Anything on the Water System Operating Contract Advisory Committee, Committee?
Yeah, we had a meeting last Friday, I believe, with city manager, Joe and I, and the city attorney, and our John Oxy, and we're still moving forward with the utility committee. We had a lot of discussion regarding the recent changes at the Cal Lake Board, and just talking through that with everybody and just bringing everybody up to speed. So we have another being scheduled. My computer's updating at the moment, so I can't see.
Two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks.
Okay.
Continue.
Thanks, Russ. And I'm assuming there's nothing on the Wildlife Committee?
No, nothing. And that, that committee should be coming off the agenda in the next few months. It was designed to sunset, so.
Great. Takes us to approval of accounts payable. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I will move to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $430,309.08.
I'll second that.
Discussion, comments? Okay, it's a roll call vote. Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Mark? Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Takes us to, we don't have public hearings, unfinished business, so new business. 14A milkwell treatment, which is on page 22 of our packet. Ryan, you want to, I know we've discussed this at the workshop, but any context you want to provide or re- context you want to provide or recaps? I know we, you got more information on a one-year versus a three-year. Did you? I think that's the motion, we could make it for one year, three years?
Yeah, correct, Mayor. And so as you heard from Aquatic Doctors last Wednesday, and he was able to, you know, kind of walk you through that, we're kind of shifting to more of a maintenance phase and, you know, the treatments have been successful, but this is something that we have to kind of stay up on, otherwise we're going to be running into a lot of issues again. So there was some discussion at the workshop and whether or not to kind of lock in our pricing for a few years, since we're kind of shifting to a maintenance phase. So that way, we're at least not seeing price increases in the, the chemical price. We could still see some reductions in the overall price as treatment areas are reduced. I was asked to kind of check with Douglas and see, you know, how they might be approaching this over the next few years. I think, you know, the feedback that I received from them are, they're also, you know, happy with Aquatic Doctors. There was a little bit of a concern about kind of some signposting, but wasn't anything that was a deal breaker. I think they're a little reluctant to do a three-year agreement because we, you know, kind of all working on applying, at least through the ODC for invasive species grant. And they're kind of interested to see how that, you know, process plays out versus maybe committing to a three-year agreement. So I think we could still, you know, commit to that, you know, three years of, of treatment, you know, if there's some sort of grant funds that, that come through, through the ODC as part of the Cal Mizzou River Greenway Project. Doesn't mean that we still can, you know, receive benefit from those and we obviously have a lot of other invasive species needs as well. But if you go with the one year, I don't think it's, it's going to be that big of a deal, so.
Questions, comments? Yeah.
Yes, Chris. Is there, was there a difference in price or was it, would the price would stay the same through those three years? Which would work better for our accounting?
Right. Well, it was going to lock in the, the, the price of the, like, the chemical per gallon, not necessarily lock in that we absolutely are going to be paying the, the, you know, the amount that, that we paid last year. So the chemical price would stay the same and at least not go up. So if we reduce chemical price stays the same and we reduce the area that we're treating, then obviously our overall cost goes down. If we kept the area of treatment the same and we didn't lock in the price, then we could potentially see an increase just from the, the cost of the chemicals themselves.
Is it just, is it just chemical costs that they locked in or was it labor as well? I thought it was proportional to the amount of work that was done, but maybe I misunderstood.
It could be.
If I remember correctly, he said the cost will stay the same for a three-year period. If we elect to take on more, it'll go up proportionately. And if we take on less, it'll go down proportionally. That was my understanding, but could be wrong.
On page 25, the bottom, there's a the last paragraph talks about the difference between the three or five-year plan.
The three or five?
I'm sorry, the one or three.
Yeah.
It says three.
Because we, yeah, we could go up to five years. I wouldn't recommend that we go five years, but.
As far as if Douglas is only planning on doing a one-year agreement as opposed to three, would it just be simpler if we went? So we are all on the same page?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, Douglas could choose to, you know, if they stop treatments and so that may impact some of our decision-making. If Douglas were, you know, unhappy in year two with Aquatic Doctors and were looking at making a change, I mean, there could be some differences in permit costs, because right now we're jointly going in on the permit, so there could be some cost difference with that. You know, we can do a one-years, see how the, the grant opportunity works out with the Outdoor Discovery Center and still revisit a, you know, a three-year agreement next year, if that's what you're interested in.
Madam Mayor, it also says if it goes up, it's going to only go up 3% or less. And if it goes up more than that, it's going to have to be redone anyway. So one year.
All right.
I agree.
Somebody like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a one-year agreement with Aquatic Doctors to apply for permits and treat mill foil in the areas presented in a not to exceed amount of $69,570 per year.
Any further questions or discussions before we vote, Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just for the benefit of the folks that maybe weren't at our workshop, which is mostly people in the room. This has been a discussion, the mill foil treatment's been going on for, I think, five or six years, maybe a little longer. I'm not exactly sure, but this is the first invasive species treatment that the city has done. And we've added to that Woody Adalgit over in the Talmage Woods area. And so the city's invested quite a bit of money. I think the Woody Adalgit was $45,000, maybe something. I can't remember the exact amount, but it was significant. That was a one-time treatment and this is going to be an annual treatment. Unfortunately, the way that this goes is that we've spent money to get it knocked down and now it's becoming more of a maintenance. As was discussed earlier, it's become more of a maintenance issue. So we'll be paying for this for the foreseeable future. And again, I've been pretty pleased with Aquatic Doctors diligence on this. They come to the meetings when we ask them to and they give us good information. And they answer all of our questions and they've, they've done a good job and have been respectful with the community, so I'm fully in support of this. Unfortunately, it's one of those things that we're just going to have to continue to deal with on a year-to-year basis. And it may go up and down depending on the water levels. We're also very dependent on our neighbors up in the Douglas, because anybody upstream from us, if, if, if they're not treating, that could very well make our problem worse. So that's the reason why there's discussion with Douglas to ensure that we're aligned to the extent we can be to treat, so our problem doesn't become worse because of a lack of a treatment for upstream. So we had a lot of that discussion on Wednesday, so just kind of a summary of where we are on this, so. At least where I am personally, I don't know.
All right, anything else before we vote? It's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
B?
Yes.
Gergen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes. Motion carries. Takes us to 14B, Park Rules, which is on page 29 of our packet. Again, this is something we talked about in the workshop. And staff has gone back and answered some questions. So Ryan, you want to walk us through where we are, what you learned as you talked?
Yeah, so after your, your review of this and discussion on, on Wednesday, there was a few things that you expressed an interest in possibly extending the park closure time for, for Ogle Beach, allowing dogs on the beach outside of the, the busier beach season and, and having a formal closure time for the playground at, at Village Square. So we've made some modifications to the, the rules. The, the version that's before you would only prevent, prohibit dogs at Ogle Beach from Memorial Day weekend through September 30th. It is a note that you do have an ordinance that, that requires that dogs still be leashed. So it's not a matter of, you know, dogs is kind of running all over the beach. There would still be, you know, some requirement to have, you know, the dog on a leash at least. And the reason why we, we, you know, they suggested with, you know, Memorial Day weekend through September 30th. I mean, certainly the beaches is staff with staff from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And then really the last, at least a couple of Septembers, we, we've seen warmer Septembers, a lot more folks at the beach, you know, to avoid any conflicts with the number of beachgoers and, and dogs and things like that. At least through September is our, our recommendation. I did check with the sheriff's office. They advised in the last few years, they haven't had any, you know, running dog issues at Ogle Beach or anything like that. The rules were updated to, to close the village and make, you know, provide a formal closing time for the Village Square Playground of, of 10:00 PM, which aligns with the, the times that the bathrooms are posted to close. And then I did add some clarification actually into Sagatuck Wilds, given that it's our park, but it's within the township. So it doesn't necessarily have the same ordinances that, that govern it like we do within the city. So anything that we want to be a particular rule there, we need a specifically list. Whereas, as we discussed on Wednesday, a lot of the rules that are here, there's other ordinances that, that govern certain conduct and behavior that aren't necessarily listed. So in the case of Sagatuck Wilds, it specifically states on the sign, no hunting or trapping, and then leash dogs being welcome. And, you know, the township's a little bit more permissive as far as hunting, so it makes it clear that our property there is not something we want hunting on and that dogs definitely need to be leashed if they're, if they're on the property. As it relates to your interest in, in kind of extending the Ogle Beach closure time, and staff's recommending that we, we keep that closure time at, at 10:00 PM. A whole host of reasons, you know, you know, I talked with Scott Herbert about this, you know, one, obviously we're trying to recruit another Ogle Beach manager, you know, having even later hours every day of the week to, to staff Ogle Beach, you know, can make it that much harder to, to recruit for that position. But it's also, you know, impactful for the staff that are closing the, the beach later in the evening, you know, it's darker as, as the evening goes on and an extra hour is going to be darker and trying to clear, you know, folks out and cleaning up trash. That's an additional hour that we have folks that are, you know, potentially consuming alcohol or other substances that can be impactful. We have cash out there that, that we're dealing with and, and trying to get wrapped up at the end of the night. So for, you know, all of those reasons, we think it's probably best to keep it at, at a 10:00 PM level at this time. But it is within your purview. If you, if you feel like you wanted to extend it, that you could.
Great. Russ?
Yeah, so on the Ogle Beach, I'm a bit confused by the, maybe it's just me that's confused. So when we said that the beach continues to close at 10:00 PM, does that mean that the gate remains staffed and the concession stand remains staffed until 10:00 PM? Or is that, because I thought we stopped taking gate receipts at 8:00. Is that correct? Could be wrong on that one.
Yeah, my, my understanding is it kind of depends on the official, like, formal sunset time, but like that the, the gate and actual closure of the beach and you can't be in the area anymore as, as time, as time, you know.
So the gates closed up at the top of the dune as you go in?
By the staff that are, are leaving and that sort of, correct, you know.
So that's a bit different than what my understanding was, is because the beaches never had staffing, true staffing after, say, eight or nine o'clock in the evening. The sheriff or the police had the responsibility of closing the gate at its prescribed hour. Sometimes it gets closed, sometimes it doesn't. So I'm a little confused because I never thought the city staff had responsibility for closing that gate. That had always been the Sagatuck police when we had a police department in our town.
I guess I'm not sure who exactly locks the gate itself, but I know we have staff there at least until 10:00. I've seen the SIM cards, we're paying them, they may be counting cash, you know, maybe doing some other things to, to get things, you know, closed up for the night, but.
What it sounds like from Scott, they're taking out garbage and, and
Cleaning things up.
Closing up the concession stand, closing up the ticket booth.
Yeah, just to kind of follow up on Russ's comment. Council Gardener's comments. I mean, so if I'm hearing correctly, there's two issues. One, that the staff would have to remain on until closing time, 11 o'clock. Before they started work or like cleaning up and everything? Is that the issue or? I understand closing the gate, but just.
Cleaning up and my understanding from Scott is sweeping folks out, telling them it's time to leave, all of those sorts of activities. These were, this is the way he described it to me. I gave you the exact, you know, wording from him, but.
Yeah, my recollection is very, very much consistent with Council Gardener. It was always my understanding that the staff called it a day seven, eight o'clock and then the law enforcement came in.
Yeah.
To be out there, I assure you, I've seen their time.
I'm not questioning it. I'm just saying that was my understanding. So if that's not the case, then.
Maybe we should go back to that. Sounds like the big challenge is, is the long hours already. So if they're, if it's moved into them spending way more time than used to, when do they stop taking money?
So my understanding is that the, around sunset is kind of the typical time that, that the booth will start closing down and shutting their operations down for the night.
I, I think we should get a little bit more formal on this. And, and again, speaking from experience on the Ogle Beach as a kid, I never got kicked out by city staff and got kicked out by the sheriff or, excuse me, by Chief Jones. So, and back in, you know, this was, the gate was at a different spot on the road. But what I'm saying is that the staff was never out there at that time of the night. And, you know, you'd be out there 11:30, 12:00 midnight and then the cops would come around and say, hey, you got to go. And I just thought that was kind of the same thing that we're doing today. Staff would get out, whether they close at sunset or 8:00 or whatever time it is, is that once they're done with their responsibilities, they're out. And then the gate gets closed by the officials at a later hour. So I, I'd like a little bit more clarity on that, just to understand. Because I'm certainly agree with Council Member Peterson, Council Member Clark. The staff should be out of there after dark, just for safety and just, they've had a long day. A little bit more clarification, at least for me. I don't know if anybody else is questioning this, but.
Sure, that many.
Align with what my experience has been, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning it as much as trying to figure if there's a middle ground somewhere that'll allow us to leave. Because, I mean, ideally, we all want to leave the park open later, right? So I don't know if it's possible they can finish their work early and then maybe have a rotating basis. Somebody comes back late at night and shuts the place down, chases everybody out. I'm just be nice if we could keep it open an extra hour. If it can't be done, it can't be done, but that's just my own perspective. Because I have heard from a lot of people, but they like to go out there in the evening and they don't like the fact that it closes down at 10 o'clock, so.
Yeah.
Chris? Oh, like, I tend to agree with Helsner and Clark. I think that the, the one point that I see is we need to make sure, we need to firm up when the staff has to be there, what time they could have the cutoff to have the garbage done. Because if it's really late and the staff has gone, then it should be the place that happens. You know, you don't want, you don't want our staff out there anyway after dark or that late trying to kick people off. Should be the patrol. So maybe we need to work with them. So I'm, I'm kind of with, with the census here, I'm hearing is let's keep it open an hour later, but keep our staff there not so long.
So push this to the next meeting, so we have more time to learn from staff?
Well, that, I'm, I'm supportive of what the council is saying about this particular issue, but we've got a lot of folks here that are concerned about the homeless veteran, which, which I'm thinking about. I appreciate everybody coming. So I think we should discuss that, given that there's a lot of interest in that before we.
Agreed.
How much of this is, is to give you kind of discretionary power, to give city staff discretionary power? Because at our workshop last Wednesday, I think there was broad consensus among this council that we did not want to create an unsafe situation for that, that veteran, for that gentleman. We were trying very hard to find him accommodation. And this is not intended as a reaction to his circumstance. So this is intended to give you the power, if we do have a unusual circumstance where we need to have a a firm ordinance that we can actually lean on, that, that, you know, that legal counsel is prepared in case we need to do something. But I don't believe anybody at this table wants to have that gentleman kicked out of the park. Are we, are we all in agreement on that?
I'm not. I, I think there's a time when he has to, when he has to move on. I've visited with numerous of the agencies. There have been offers. I don't know if anybody's checked with the VA homeless hotline or the Gateway Mission that has emergency services there. I'm not, I'm not opposed to having a timeframe. I think 30 days is too long. First, I'll be too cold anyway. But I think he has a caseworker assigned to him and, you know, I'd be more than happy to work with that caseworker to try to move along. But I think there has to be a time limit when he goes.
Yeah, I think, I mean, sort of the, the confluence of winter approaching, the, just the weather getting too cold for somebody to stay outside. And the sort of the sense of grace to find him a place to live as quickly as we can, so he's safe and warm. And I kind of view that as a separate issue. I think the what has been hard, I think, in this situation is we didn't, we didn't have a way to encourage this process to move on, you know, more efficiently. And I don't think we can be in a situation where we have an endless, you know, an endless situation where somebody's living in the park. So my hope was that this was showing grace, helping him get someplace safe and warm, but then also having in the future, the ability to talk to somebody to say, hey, you know, we can help you find a place to go, but we can't, you know, we have a, we don't let people spend the night in the park. So that's, I was hoping that would be a way to.
I guess my concern is, is that this ties our hands. I don't really like to have our hands tied on this. And this was a very unique situation. I mean, you know, I, I put Ruth and Kurt in touch with the manager back September 3rd. We thought we had it on a good path with the sheriff's department, working with On Point. We thought the VA was going to be helpful. We have a federal shutdown now. The gentleman lost his phone. You know, but at, at the end of the day, he's a member of this community. He's a veteran. He deserves our help. And I would not want to say, well, the ordinance says you have to go. I, I, I would like us as a council, I would like city staff to have some flexibility when we have one of our own members of our community, a veteran, who's, who's kind of falling between the cracks. I don't, I don't want that to happen. I, I want the gentleman to be helped and I don't want us to be part of the problem. I want us to be part of the solution.
So is the grace that staff has to work a situation like this, is that not explicit? So is the grace, um, that staff has to work a situation like this, is that not explicit enough for you?
Uh, that's why I'm asking the question, Mayor.
Okay.
I mean, if, if that's the case, then I can support this. But I, I do not want this to be used as a blunt instrument against this individual, because I don't, I don't think that's fair to him.
Well, I, I agree. And, I mean, we are really getting on time where, and I appreciated hearing, you know, Jan's comment that, you know, she can help, you know, Kurt and, uh, is here. If, you know, people can huddle up after the meeting and find something. Cause whether it's a, a five-day grace or, um, you know, three-day grace or a five-day grace or a whatever, it's too cold for somebody to be living in the park. So if it's getting him into an emergency situation till there can be a longer term, that to me seems like it's fair. I mean, I agree with you, Scott. I mean, I, you know, we gotta get this, we gotta get him someplace safe. But I think the weather is not our friend right now. And so it's gonna need to happen pretty fast.
I, I agree. It's not as free either.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I just want to make sure this is not being used as a blunt instrument to kick somebody out of the park. When we're, when, when we've got this on the path, it's been a difficult path. But we've been working this issue kind of quietly, discreetly with what we thought were the appropriate channels for months now. So, and I, I, I don't want this to be misconstrued by anybody here as an attempt to kick this gentleman out, because it's not. This is to give you the, you know, you know, the, the staff some rules that you can lean on if, should you need to in the future. But this is not a reaction, in my view, to, to this individual. Because I, I think we are working to, to help him and it's been complicated. But I, I don't want this to appear that we're kind of, you know, cutting this matter off, you know.
Yeah. And so, I mean, I, I was the one who pushed to get this onto our agenda. And my logic was, um, one, it's, I mean, we need to, we need to get him someplace warm. But the other thing is, it, as we have, I think rightly, I mean, I think Roy has felt like there was, there wasn't pressure, there wasn't any time sensitivity. And I do think, um, having, uh, having a, you know, not allowing people to spend the night in our parks for, you know, more than a temporary period, does give us a, uh, the ability to say, we need to find you a home. And, you know, I think everybody was helping him and with great intentions and, you know, we would get so far. And then it's like 12 steps back and then back and forth. And so my thinking was to be able to say, um, hey, we gotta, you know, we gotta do this. This isn't an endless, you know, we can't just let this play out indefinitely. And so it's a, yes, Chris?
I have more faith in our social services too. I think that there's been some disconnects between what was offered and what was not wanted. But again, I think we, I don't see this, I don't see this ordinance as a blunt instrument. I see it as protection so we don't find ourselves with somebody that we can't help later on. I see it more of a, of, of that point. And I agree with you about the grace period. Uh, I think there's still some avenues that haven't been tapped, as I've mentioned, Gateway Mission as well as the VA homeless hotline. And again, I'd be willing to work with you too.
And would you be willing after the meeting to talk with Kurt and Jan and sort of brainstorm some of the near terms?
Names of his caseworkers?
That'd be great.
Talk to, yes.
That'd be great. That, and you can kind of be, help keep council informed. Awesome.
So with the questions still up in the air as far as what we plan to do with the Oval Beach hours, are we still hoping to get this across tonight or do we need more time?
I think it sounds like we need more time, to be honest with you.
I'm gonna ask for some more time on some clarity on the beach.
So do we want to decouple the overnight or keep them together knowing that we are moving with due haste, given the weather?
I'd like to have the ordinance regarding the park done tonight. Others?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, sleeping in the park could be a thing. I mean, so I, my preference would be to keep this all together. I mean, I think, I, I just wanted to raise the issue of this, you know, camping and sleeping. Cause I know there's folks here that are very interested in where the council kind of stands on helping this gentleman. But I think the Oval Beach Hours piece goes directly to if people are hanging out too long and becoming an issue. So I, I would, I would recommend keeping it together and dealing with it once we get some more clarity on the Oval Beach piece. Because they're, they're all sort of.
Put this off for, for further time?
I'm okay doing that, but I just really want everyone that's here, because I appreciate the comments from, from the folks that came here for public comment, to understand that this council is very much committed to helping this gentleman, you know, which I, and I appreciate folks that came out to advocate for him.
Kristen, Russ?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, thank you. Again, thank you, everybody, this evening for being here. I've been made aware of, of, I've lost count of the number of people that have personally tried to assist Roy. And a lot of efforts and personal expense made for Roy to assist him. And it's not for lack of effort that there hasn't been a community response to this individual. And that's very, that's, that's, that's very humbling. And I'm not a social worker, but the part that, 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 I'm not sure why nothing has taken hold here. I mean, that's, that's the thing that kind of confuses me is to, the city has, you know, the city is not a social service agency, but there seems to be a lot of social services that have been offered to Mr. Davis. And, um, I don't know all the details, but the thing that really kind of strikes me is that why hasn't something really hit? Is it going to take the cold weather to make it happen? Again, I don't know. I do support the ordinance that we're going to be discussing for the park rules. I think it's important for the city from a, just a government standpoint to have rules. This is not a blunt instrument. I think there are going to be situations described at the workshop where I've seen people that have chosen to sleep in their cars overnight because they've maybe been at the bars too long. That should be something we shouldn't discourage. That's safer for everybody as well as, uh, people sometimes will fall asleep on a bench in the park for the same reason. And I certainly don't want people to be, you know, taken away for those types of activities. Where I think the park rules come into play is that if we have an individual like we have today who's run into, you know, a personal situation and it becomes an extended period, the authorities, whether it's the city manager or the police, have something to lean back on and say, we don't allow you, is there someone we can help with? What can we do? What, where do we go with this? And that our city manager has, you know, a list of names and phone numbers of people to put these folks in touch with when they need help. That's what I'm looking for. And, you know, we've, we've, there's been a learning experience for me as a city. And, and I just, I'm just, I hope Mr. Davis finds the help he needs. He's been offered quite a bit of help already. I'm personally aware of a number of things that he's been given to help him. And I understand he does have a new phone, so he's got a phone. So.
So can you, and same question for you, Chris, live with pushing this for another meeting, knowing that in the interim, people are working to find a solution for him? Or do you want to?
I don't want to force it through.
Okay.
If, if people feel we need a little more time, that's fine. I think the situation though is something that has to be addressed, not as a blunt instrument, but to give the, our staff and, and our community the opportunity to not find ourselves in this type of situation or some person finding themselves in this type of situation.
Yeah.
There are services out there.
Right.
Lauren?
And I just think if we, um, you know, we have to look at this in general for our parks when it comes to overnight sleeping and camping. You know, think about Oval Beach again and some of the places that we wouldn't, we wouldn't think to allow it at Oval Beach, as far as camping or sleeping overnight. But I'm willing to wait and, um, you know, get the things dealt with, with the hours at Oval Beach and do this all at one time.
Scott and Joe, you, can you?
Yeah, I can support that. And I don't think we made a motion. So do we need a motion to table?
Yeah. Okay. So, um, would someone like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting, which is November 10th?
10th?
Yeah. Mayor, I'll move to a, table this item till the November 10th meeting.
Uh, roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Dixon, yes. Stand.
Yes.
Great. Motion carries. Thank you and thank you to everybody, um, for coming tonight, sharing your perspective. And I, I think several of you can huddle, huddle after the meeting, including, um, Chris. So, okay, that completes new business. Work at now the second public comment period. Anyone in the room wish to make a public comment about anything?
Okay, I'm gonna try to be very brief. Jan Cohen, that was for you, Jan. I watched, uh, some of the, uh, on-demand videos of the last couple of workshops. Never knew there was a workshop or I'd have been coming, especially when a lot of it was about us. I noticed that, uh, Councilman Gardner at one of the, um, last couple of workshops, mentioned that he would, that he thought we were having events, chalking events, and that he was going to forward some of our posts over to their, our city manager, Ryan, to try to prohibit us from having an event on the public sidewalks, which at that time was chalking. So I'd like to say this, that in the first place, the most of our people that we've ever had was four. Many times I chalk by myself. Sometimes I have one or two other people with me. And when I'm really lucky, I have four of us. Cause, you know, a lot of us are older citizens and it's not so easy for most of them to bend over and, and, or get down on the sidewalk. And if they do get down there, then I gotta go help them up again. So then we'll both be down there. So, uh, it's not an event of any kind. But the truth of the matter is that events on public sidewalks are, um, safe kept by our First Amendment. We are allowed to protest on our public sidewalks without any kind of a permit, any, everywhere in this country, that is true. When permits come into effect, it's usually to use a public park or to block the traffic in the road. You know, if we need it blocked off and it needs to be a big parade or something of the sort so that we're in the road, a march perhaps, if it wasn't on the sidewalks, those things would require events. So to have an event for a, a chalking, uh, to have a permit for a chalking event or have to, uh, tell people what we were going to chalk, we don't really have an ability to do that. Now, I do give out a sheet of suggested, uh, topics to chalk on. And I say, no hate speech, no cussing. Remember that children walk along these sidewalks and they can see it, so everything has to be child-friendly. Those are the rules and, uh, other than that, they can chalk what they want. Now, we have had 20, 30 people sometimes chalking, but they're not our people, they're not members of our group. They're generally visitors or locals that we don't know, that aren't a part of our group, that happen to be passing by. They see what we're doing and they ask if they can. And of course, we invite them. We say, if you'd like to help, we've got plenty of chalk. When they say, what are you doing here? That kind of thing. So we're, we try to be very user-friendly to everyone. And, um, is it an event because a whole bunch of tourists want to chalk with us? I don't know. That's up to you to decide, I guess. But still, it's a public sidewalk, so it doesn't require a permit or any kind of permission from anybody. It's free speech. The other thing I want to talk about real quick, how much time do I have?
Two seconds. Any, anyone else?
Uh, Kevin Trigali, 119 Butler. I'm here to express my deep concern regarding the recent changes to the chapter 99.5 zoning ordinance and the spirit behind its enforcement. While I understand the city's intent is to enforce the caps, I believe the current penalties and enforcement mechanisms outlined in the revised ordinances are not only disproportionate, but they fail to align with the city's values of fairness, reasonableness and community well-being. The consequences in this ordinance do not reflect the true spirit of what Sogatuck stands for, namely fostering a cooperative, supportive and fair environment for both its full-time and part-time residents. The penalty of an immediate suspension for a clerical error is excessive, harsh and severe, and fails to consider the facts that these rental owners have been good, law-abiding citizens for over a decade. It is my firm belief that a more thoughtful and balanced approach would be more in line with both the letter and the spirit of the law, preventing undue hardship while still achieving the intended goals, preventing, um, that, that was intended here. I see current political campaigns throughout our city using the word reasonable. What is reasonable about a death sentence for an administration error? When asking other tourist cities such as Traverse City about their policies and sharing with them the consequences that we're going through, the first thing out of his mouth was, well, we certainly wouldn't be throwing the book at them. Last week, I emailed your director of planning and zoning and asked for a list of properties that have been revoked or terminated since the amendment. And he sent me a list that did not include the property that's in question. So I asked a second time to confirm. Same thing. This is what he has. What are your consequences? Is it termination? I strongly urge council to reconsider the scale penalties and take into account a more reasonable set of consequences. The current language is alienating and disproportionately impacting law-abiding citizens, local businesses and creating unnecessary tension between community and city officials. I'd also like to stress that should this issue not be addressed in a fair and balanced manner, we have no choice but to explore all available legal avenues to protect my rights and the rights of others who are affected by this ordinance. However, it's my sincere, sincere hope that litigation will not be necessary. I firmly believe a solution based on dialogue, reason and compromises more in line with the values this council claims to uphold. I'm not here to undermine anything, okay? But to ensure that its implementation is just reasonable, reasonable for all residents and businesses affected. I ask council to carefully consider the broader implications of these changes and work with the community to ensure that the ordinance reflects a true balanced enforcement and fairness. The punishment does not fit the crime. I look forward to your response and hope we can find a solution that respects the rights of all residents while still achieving the attendance objectives of this ordinance.
Anyone else?
This is Dan Fox, talking for Dan Fox, not for the fire district. So anything I say from this point on, don't blame the chief. Learned something tonight. And I admit to not having kept up on, and I know it came before the council, I think it was off hunting, so I was tuned out. And, and heard tonight, first time I've heard it, uh, the word chalk used as a verb. I've only ever thought of chalk, I thought chalk was a noun. So there you go. I do want to at least venture that, uh, that I, I stepped on their work coming in here tonight. A thought that I'm afraid that's a slippery slope and a really conceivably unpleasant one. I, I could see under the premise that we're operating under now, apparently, doing the 300 and how many other, 356 steps up to Mount Bald Head?
Really?
You know, a message on each step, why not? I don't think, I don't think the sidewalks should be used as a communication medium, period. I don't think city property should be used as a communications medium. We, we wouldn't allow painting or chalking or anything, however temporary, on the side of our trucks or the back of the truck or whatever. As I say, I just worry it's a, it's a slippery, slippery slope. And I'm, I'm a, I'm a protester, so I'm, I'm good with that, believe me. I, I'm First Amendment, I dedicated a college yearbook in a way that nobody was pleased about, but, uh, case or a. So it's not about that. I just, I worry about city property and particularly the sidewalks, the streets, whatever, being used as a communications medium. It's, it, it seems wrong to me. And it seems, and at the extreme, you're going to have a painted lady here. It's, it's, it's one thing after another, after another. Where do you, where do you stop? Where do you stop? I actually thought maybe one limitation could be, you could say artwork, you know? I remember Greg, he was here and he's talking about the Easter egg. Good with Easter eggs? That's artwork. That's not a communications medium in terms of trying to get some, one message or another across. And as they get political, Katie, bar the door. Once, once you go there, you can't come back. And it's gonna go, it's gonna go in ways nobody's gonna be happy with, I don't think. So for whatever it's worth, and, and as I say, good luck with protesting, I'm all, all for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
First of all, thank you so much. Uh, my name is Kurt Piper. My wife and I moved here two and a half years ago. All the way from Hamilton. Not a very far track, but since we moved here, I've been so amazed on the kindness and the compassion that I see in this community. And I'm seeing it tonight. And thank you for that. in this community, and I'm seeing it tonight, and thank you for that. It's just been such an uphill battle. I thought this was gonna be an easy solution, and it's just like, every time, it's just filling out more forms, more paperwork, then you have to complete all these things, you have to send them in. There are all these organizations out there that are supposed to be assisting, and I think there's a real lack of places to stay, I think is part of the problem that we're facing right now. You know, but every time I ask somebody about this situation, they volunteer information, and they actually pick up the ball and run with it. So I've got these people not only helping me, but actually, they're helping Roy, but they're actually not giving me advice, they're actually picking up the ball and running with it. And that is just so cool to see, and thank you for being the community that you guys are.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Anyone online wish to speak? Uh, Austin?
Yeah, uh, good evening, council members. Austin Marano, Mason Street. So, uh, real quick, I've seen a lot of talk, uh, lately online about the city's finances, and for the record, I think the city council has done a great job managing, you know, our city's resources, and I'm genuinely proud of what's been accomplished. Now, also, a form I've seen in this online discourse is it seems like the city, and correct me if I'm wrong, is bringing in more revenue than ever before, and that's probably because rising property values, high taxable values, all that jazz. And I know the city is only one piece of our overall tax bill, but that slice is presumably higher than it's ever been. Now, because, uh, residents are paying more than ever in property taxes, I think it's worth, potentially, the city, when you guys have time, because I know you have a bunch of it, revisiting some of the cost-sharing ordinances that were created when the tax base was much smaller. Now, for example, a lot of us, myself included, recently got notices about sidewalk repairs, and I really appreciate the city, they're trying to keep costs down by having the DPW do the repairs, and they're splitting costs with homeowners, but the ordinance still puts the responsibility on the people who live next to the sidewalks. And I think that might have made sense years ago, as a, as we saw with Ryan's timely inclusion of the 1969 article on it, but, uh, but it feels a little antiquated now, uh, given where our tax base is at. So, my wife and I, for example, pay almost 12,000 years, uh, in property taxes for a small 1,200 square foot, over 100-year-old home, and that's fine. We knew what we were signing up for, we're not complaining about that, and, and again, we support the work this council is doing. But it is a little frustrating to then get hit again for small things like sidewalk repairs, and that's especially in the context of we have, you know, sky-high water and sewer rates, because those issues were pushed off for decades as well, to get that infrastructure in place. And then moving beyond all that, I think there's also kind of a larger equity issue, because, as we all know, many of our streets don't even have sidewalks, and then there's, you know, the rest, most of them only have it on one side, so we're naturally routing all traffic on very limited sidewalks, and then only those homeowners who live on them are responsible for repairs, and that just doesn't seem fair. So, I don't know if this ordinance is gonna be the one, because I imagine, I've talked with Scott, and he's been great with communication, and BW's been great, so I don't know if this is the ordinance that needs to be changed, but I'm just trying to push ideas out there in ways that we can, you know, put down costs for our residents, our full-time residents, and, you know, potentially get creative with other funding options, you know, given that our infrastructure base does take a big hammering from our tourist economy. So just other ways to look at it, uh, but again, super appreciative of everyone on council, all that you guys do. I just want to put that out there, but thank you, and sorry for adding a couple more minutes to your evening.
Thanks, Austin. Thanks, Austin. Anyone else online? Last call for anyone in the room? All right, that closes the public comment, takes us to correspondence. Uh, we have a nice note from Lisa Mize, uh, for Flower World, and then, um, communications from Mr. Titeoff, I'm not quite sure how he pronounces his last name, and Mr. Straker, uh, which takes us to council comments. Chris, you wanna kick us off?
Well, I'm excited that I have a meeting to go to tomorrow night for the town zoo. That's right, you have authority. Uh, good conversation, as always. Uh, I'm convinced that we can find a way to help Mr. Davis. Uh, I think that the social services, I agree, they are hit and miss, because they don't coordinate real well, but there's money that comes into them, and services that are available, we just need to track that. And I used to do that in my past life. Well done.
Thank you. Uh, just a acknowledgement to, um, Erin Wilkinson and her crew for the parade in Douglas on Saturday. Um, great event. I was honored to be selected as a judge for the costume contest, which was difficult, so, um, anyway, a lot of fun, and great time in the city, a lot of folks in Sagatuck, too, for the events during the day. Um, so just another nice weekend, fall weekend in Sagatuck. I do want to clarify, uh, Tim Straker, um, who is also Chair of our Historic District Commission, has, has written a letter to the council, and I just want to clarify a couple of things, um, in his, uh, email. One was, this was not a lawsuit. As stated in the complaint filed with the Michigan Department of State in October 24, it was claimed that Epic hadn't filed a legal statement of organization, which is required under the Michigan Campaign Finance Act. So again, not a lawsuit, a response to a complaint that was filed, too. This case was not legally resolved and closed without any wrongdoing. Epic, the organization, had to file the necessary campaign finance reports and paid two late filing fees of $500 each. My motion and comments made at the July 28th, 2025 council meeting were not a misstep. They were in response to the unresolved nature of the legal matters outlined in the letter from the Michigan Department of State dated June 16th, 2025. I also want to respond to, uh, I appreciate Jan making her comments this evening. Um, when I brought up the event, it was a Facebook post, it had been shared with me, and I shared it with our city manager, simply for awareness, and two, is to make sure that we had a safe, we had a safe event, because there's a lot of, a lot of public discourse, right, regarding the chalking, and I'm 100% supporter of First Amendment rights, but I'm also a very careful supporter of public safety. And I said, it's just important that we make sure we're aware of this taking place, so if anything was to occur, there was protection for you, and there's protection for anybody else that may have showed up, and fortunately, there was no event to be pleased, but that was, that was my intent. Thank you.
Lauren?
Uh, yeah, busy weekend in Sagatuck. Just want to thank all the volunteers that helped block streets. Speaking of safety, um, we wouldn't be able to do the parades that we do if we didn't have enough volunteers stepping forward to be able to block the streets. Did so for the homecoming parade as well. Um, again, it's all for safety reasons, and something our fire chief, um, has come to us for, and wanted us to, um, make sure it could happen, and it wouldn't happen without our volunteers in our community. Um, I just want to thank everyone for the compassion you've shown. Um, it just shows what an amazing community we do have. And I also appreciate people coming to this meeting and speaking here, instead of doing it online. Um, when you do it on social media, it, it goes down to a path where, um, there's a lot of misinformation. So doing it here, doing it respectfully, um, sending letters, and getting the right information here and through our city staff, doing it that way, and not venting a lot of misinformation on social media. Um, being here in person, I appreciate those who've chosen to do that. So thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that. I just appreciate all you folks coming tonight. It's, it's refreshing to have a good turnout at a city council meeting, where we can discuss these things face-to-face. It's very helpful. Um, Friday, Halloween, um, hoping for a lot of trick-or-treaters on the hill. My neighbor Barry Johnson's been keeping count of trick-or-treaters for decades now, and I'm hoping that he'll be able to report to me that numbers are up, so, uh, please be safe. Look out for the trick-or-treaters, uh, this Friday night.
You stole my messages. Good meeting. I wanted to thank everyone for showing up, both in person and virtually. Um, I also say I'm proud to be part of a council that, you know, embraces helping people as a general policy, and in doing so builds discretion to the rules that we all know we need, and we need to, you know, enforce from time to time, but it's good to kind of have that little relief valve out there. Uh, and yeah, I've never been up on the hill during trick-or-treat. It is something special, and, uh, want to make sure everybody knows that, uh, drive safe, because there are a lot of excited kids out there running around, and, um, don't want to see anybody get hurt, so looking forward to it. Thank you all.
So, uh, you know, the, we have one young person on the little Manchester YRIC enclave, and, um, so we really do Halloween up for her good, but we had to move, move the start time up, because they're going over to the hill to trick-or-treat, so. West Side sending four people your way, which is great. Um, so Kurt, um, I just, uh, I kind of want to riff on what you were saying a little bit. Um, this is an incredible community, and there are so many big hearts, um, who really help neighbors, and, um, I love that you are new relatively to the community, and, um, you just embody that and inspire all of us. Um, to what you said, Lauren, about the, the parades, I mean, April Gundy, you know, again, just one of my heroes for, uh, what she does to pull things off here, and pretty quietly, um, under the radar. Chris, um, really appreciate you using your expertise over the years and joining in. I, you've been part of these conversations for weeks, and this is what makes our community work. Um, and it, you know, we have a lot, um, you know, it's a, it's a great community. So, this is a great, great meeting, um, appreciate it. I'm glad we're focused on sort of the bigger picture in terms of, you know, how we deal with somebody who needs our help, um, and looking out longer term as well. So, uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.